This meeting of the Committee on Council Processes to order for Monday, November tenth. And we'll just do a roll call of committee members, council member daily.
Present.
We have no sound at the bottom right, the bottom right. Are you seeing the volume?
Down there in the blue bar.
The last one.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's weird, that's something happened. Just click that on the X. Portia Charlie there.
Present.
Council members, really?
Present.
And I'm also my repeat host. Five members of the city council staff. One member of the public here. And we have listening to. Um, thank you all for being here. First, um, look at the agenda, is there any, are there any? The audio is now horrible. Uh oh. So can you not understand what we're saying?
Your microphone especially was, was very soft, I couldn't hear, um, really well. But when you were speaking up, I was able to hear better.
I wonder if you hit same this system.
I think it's not supposed to be on the same system.
Is this better? Can you hear a stutter? You hear us at all?
So is it worse now for me? It's good?
That's better to me.
Yes, it is better.
Okay, good. All right, so any revisions to the agenda? From committee members before we begin?
Yes.
I do think we should talk about our ability to actually meet during the day. Because it has been clear that many of us have scheduling issues because of it. So I think we should have some level of discussion.
Yeah, I was thinking that too, that we need to reconsider the meeting.
I, I was told when I first got on this committee that we'd be meeting at night.
Did I tell you that?
No.
Okay.
I've seen President Bigfoot said that there were three out of four of us who have full-time day jobs. Um, so coming, even coming into this, I was expecting not an interruption to the workday.
Okay, I put that on the agenda, so.
Great, um, thank you.
We will talk about that. And if it gets close to the end of the meeting, just remind me. Okay, any other adjustments to the agenda? All right, so I'm moving on to all business. Uh, the city residency requirement for service on boards and commissions is something we've talked about extensively at the last meeting. And, uh, I included a document here where I tried to summarize what, um, we had learned from the research that, um, council staff, uh, that council staff and deputy third cross they had worked on. And, uh, just to try to narrow down what we might consider as far as, um, membership from outside the city limits. So if you look on page two, there's a list of boards and commissions that do not control city funds, do not currently allow non-city residents, and are not limited by state code to only city resident membership. So you'll see that there are eleven listed there. Although there are some notes by a few of them. And then, these are just my thoughts, um, below, whereas not these maybe wouldn't be appropriate to have. When we've got membership from outside the city limits. But I want, of course, discussion, discuss that with you all. Uh, so that leaves six. If we look at the updated research document that Christine Chang provided, thank you. At the end, uh, she did add a recommendation to look at, I think there were four, I hear most.
Yes, but, um, actually, after we reviewed this last time when I met with Jennifer Clark, um, also, we, we talked about, uh, especially the art commission that's actually with City Fund and, um, so that I did a little update on the research document as well, it's in red, I believe it's in the second page, yeah, of that research, page five of the packet. Yeah, so that's in updates, so, and also a recommendation from, um, I believe, the mayor's office, um, from Julius, we talked about this. And, um, initially, we talked about, um, working on a Google form and then collect some information from some boards and mission regarding their thoughts, um, whether they want to, um, add an advisory seat or how they would like to proceed with this, and I believe Clark honestly has some further, uh, information in regard to that.
Yeah, so, interesting for that. Um, Julius and Christine and I sat down and talked about these questions that we would send out to the staff liaisons, uh, to the four that were identified as potentially having the council, I keep saying council, the county advisory seats. So there were a list of questions that we sent out, and I was a little, I was a little surprised at some of the responses that we had here, so I'll just share that with you all here. Uh, the first question that was asked that everybody was, does your commission have city funds that you allocate to groups and organizations? Um, a few, majority of that was yes, um, as we have outlined here and as Christine outlined earlier, and then there was one response that was a no. Does the work and mission of your commission extend beyond into Monroe County, please explain? And so that one, we had questions that were, or answers that were, uh, varied, so we had some of the yes, some no. Um, there, in particular, the tree commission basically said that their duties is for trees in the city of Bloomington, so they were very much on par, um, but everything else had said, you know, while we do, uh, focus primarily in Bloomington, however, the work that the commissions all have been doing has been getting some interest and from county people, and county people have been going to some of these events and meetings that are put on by some of these commissions. Uh, the next question is, should your commission focus only on the work within Bloomington? Again, um, one commission in particular, the tree commission, had mentioned that, again, their primarily role is just based within Bloomington, so they were inclined to say no. Um, the other feedback that we received from this were, um, similar, uh, but basically explaining that, yes, they are, like, the rules do say that they are supposed to be primarily focused in Bloomington. Again, they are starting to see some county, um, feedback and some, uh, county interest from people. Should or could your commission benefit from having a county resident on an advisory seat? And I explained that the advisory seat would not have voting privileges and would only serve as an advisor to the commission. Um, one said no, and the others said maybe. Cause that was a, it was a yes, no, or maybe. The next question would be, would you like for the common councils committee on council processes to consider adding a county advisory seat to your commission? And as you can imagine, since those were similar questions there, we got the same responses with one no and, um, maybe's there. Do you believe, cause we had talked about in previous meetings, that, um, maybe if we do add the advisory seats, that we could possibly look at condensing some of the seats that are on the, already on the boards and commissions? And so the question next was, do you believe that the number of seats for your commission should be reduced? Um, we got, um, no. And then we got a couple, uh, maybe. Or actually, excuse me, we got majority no and one yes. Uh, the person that had said yes was the liaison for the, um, environmental commission. Uh, and their feedback was currently at twelve, which I believe is one of the largest commissions in the city. I'm not, that was the environmental commission. Currently at twelve, which I believe is one of the largest, this is not my words, but the words of the liaison. Um, I believe is the largest commission in the city, I'm not sure how much should be reduced, but I have additional thoughts included in the next response. Because the next response was, is there any other feedback that you would find helpful that we could bring back to this particular committee? And here was that response. Considering a merge with B cost may be beneficial, I think both commissions have turnover and quorum issues, as the sum of the commissions is twenty-six seats. Having these merged may allow for less turnover quorum issues and be able to discuss overlapping topics. So again, that was something that we had talked about, hmm, a few months ago about, and that was also in the NOVAC report, to condense some of those, um, and the B cost commission on sustainability and environmental was talked about merging together. I know there's lots of thoughts there, but that's up to the, this committee, um, if you will, to handle that, but that was the feedback from that. So overall, the general consensus from this feedback related to adding a county advisory seats is no, but maybe, um, which might not give us a lot to play around with here. Um, but the idea is if we, because there were questions of, if we did add county advisory seats, that there was this potential that we would just add more seats. And the intention that I think we all three, uh, myself, Julius, and Christine had talked about is, the answer is not, we're not trying to add more seats, because we, of course, don't want to add quorum issues to anything or anybody and affect that in any type of way. But taking a seat that's already vacant on a commission and flipping that seat to a commission or, um, a county advisory seat. So that is the feedback that we have seen, and that's it.
Thank you so much, a lot of work.
Yeah.
Um, so, how many commissions responded or liaisons responded?
Um, there were three, um, that were responding to us.
Okay, which commissions were they?
Um, it was.
I think that's the four that we identified.
Yes.
Except for Cass.
Oh, okay, so were the tree commission.
Tree, environmental, I think, and arts.
Okay, gotcha. Um, yeah, the tree commission, I figured that really has to do with Bloomington, so that should be just Bloomington. I'd love to get feedback from Portia and Sydney on, uh, what they think. Both, uh, you know, should other commissions be considered for, uh, having county members? And when I, that's just shorthand, I know that city people live in the county, so. Should other commissions be considered for that, um, and how do you react to the information we just gained from Jen? Portia?
Um, I'm just wondering, have we, how would we feel about taking it directly to the commissions and letting them discuss individually and decide, you know, vote among their members? Do they want this, do they think it would be beneficial, and let them come back to us with their findings?
To all the commissions or just certain ones?
It's any of the ones that we're considering.
And when you say we're considering, do you mean the four that, um, staff pointed out or the six that I pointed out or some combination of?
Yeah, I mean, I think if, if, any that are not, um, well, I mean, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Sorry, it's been a day. Um, the, any that are not precluded, you know, specifically from having any county residents. So I guess maybe the six that we're looking at. Um, I mean, I think we could, although eliminate, you know, for example, the tree commission, because we established that's, that's just Bloomington. I don't have a specific proposal list, I'm just talking in general right now, is that a route we would want to go in terms of gauging from them? The usefulness.
Yeah. What does make sense to me?
I certainly don't mind, I do just want to push back a little bit on the arts commission though, because the county doesn't have, um, an arts commission, and I quite frankly don't think art has borders. So I would advocate that county residents should be able to be on the BAC and to expand that eligible for grants from the BAC. That's my take on it, especially because I think that we're a city, but we're located inside of Monroe County, and we should take opportunities to not only collaborate with the governments, but collaborate with the residents as well. Um, and I do think that Monroe County residents should feel that the city of Bloomington is their partner, even if it's not their representative.
So did you, did I understand right that, um, so you would be in favor of allowing county residents to serve, but also to apply for the grant?
Yes.
Um, well, if, if we could look at the list of six that, I mean, I, I don't even know if you all agree with my criteria. Uh, you know, do not control city funds, do not allow non-residents currently, not limited by state code. That gave us eleven, and then I sorted out five of those for the reasons given in my, um, in my document.
What page are you looking at?
I'm looking at page two of our packet.
Okay. Too far down.
Okay. So I guess it would be helpful to hear from um, other committee members or other, uh, staff clerk office folks. Uh, if this is a logical list that I came up with, if the criteria makes sense. I, so I do not have the BAC on.
Yeah, I, I think we should even expand it to like the commission on the status of women and the commission on. Okay, great, great.
Yeah, women, um, Hispanic and Latina affairs. Aren't we having families?
Thank you.
I think there's some of those that already had, like, county appointments, for example, um, Martini, Precinctine birthday commissions. That one, I believe there's, um, county, um, Monroe County government. Allowed, I think I'm looking at the page sixteen of our packet. I think the current qualification that we have in our code is already mentioned, yeah, we have the government.
But then it says must be city resident, so I interpret that as the county government can appoint somebody, but that person has to be resident of the city.
I think that's, um, oh, I can't remember, I can recall last time where I talked with Jennifer about this. Um, we had a discussion that it's currently allowing.
It's, i- it honestly kind of leaves the door open, because as it looks right now, when you look at it, um, you know how some seats will say MCC, um, which is Monroe County Commissioners or County Council, uh, listed and onboard, this one, even though, although, that it, you know, code does state that, um, it calls for Monroe County Government, there's really no appointed body for county government that appoints.
That's not what it says, not what you're saying. Um, it says preference for appointment shall be given to persons belonging to dot, 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 Monroe County Government. So I wouldn't classify that as a Monroe County resident necessarily. It's a person who works for.
Right, but then the next sentence said it must be city resident, so it could be somebody who works for the county government.
Right.
But resides, must reside in the city, that's why. But I'm not a lawyer.
That provision is on our code, so must be city resident, it's in the general provision, if I remember correctly, so that's including all the commissions and boards and some other listed on that general provision. But other than that, there's also a separate provision under our code that's, um, saying, you know, this commission itself shall like have a preference for appointments under all these different categories. But yeah, so it, it depends, I think maybe back to the conversation regarding whether we should revise the general provision. And that's, I think, um, including in our discussion today.
And honestly, the fixes that we probably did early this year with respect to Children's Commission, um, I believe the Commission on Hispanic and Latina Affairs, earlier this year, we changed title to, um, to allow those to say county residents. That's probably the intention that we probably should have did, like, thinking back in my mind, um, we probably should have did that for this one too. To make it clear.
Yeah, I think it needs to be clarified. Okay, so then I had the Bloomington Digital Underground Advisory Committee. Now that, I could, I can understand an argument that said that should not have county residents, because that is an asset of the city. And it's all located in city limits. But we might have somebody who's, who lives outside city limits, for example, they want somebody from MCCSC, um, on it, and they currently have somebody from the school that's been on it. Um, but if that person happens to live in the county, then that would be a stumbling block, so.
Which is what has happened with the Transportation Commission. Um, the Transportation Commission had people from MCCSC apply, because it calls for, um, a seat, like, a representative from MCCSC to be a part of it, but a couple of people have applied from MCCSC, and unfortunately, due to the qualifications of the person having to live, um, inside city limits, therefore, they were disqualified. But there is a part in code that talks about how seats, like, a person could be, they could live, I think this actually pertains to, um, city employees, but you can be a part of that. You could be seated on that particular commission because of your job, by virtue of your job. So could that be something that could be like for, like you just mentioned, um, for Transportation Commission? You know, that could be something that could be, they could be seated in that position, they could still live outside in the county, but because they work in MCCSC, and because we are looking for MCC's, MCCSC's involvement, they shouldn't be penalized because they work in MCCSC, point blank, period, right?
Could we add something to the code, which is, says, like, clarifies that, that it's to expand past city limits? Or does anyone have the legal interpretation that it already exists?
You know, it's hard to tell, these provisions are spread out.
Okay.
They're like sprinkled through, throughout the code, and, um, you know, I'm not, I don't say that to be critical, it just happens, you know, over a period of time.
So in your community, it would be beneficial to clarify in the code, i- if, if that's the intention, I'd ask, thank you.
And then, um, I think the CAS commission definitely could have Monroe County members. That's my opinion, um. Of course, the staff wants us to sunset that mission anyway, so we'll get to that. My mental commission, we did hear from them, right, who said that? Wait, how, so how did they respond to?
Basically, it was, it was more like a maybe, their biggest thing that they really want you, uh, of the committee to consider is condensing them with B costs. Um, but what they were saying in their feedback is, although they primarily function with, um, you know, Bloomington, you know, environmental, one of the lines that was said in their response back is, you know, environmental issues knows no boundaries when it comes to things, so, um, you know, they have an indirect impact on county, but a direct impact in cities.
County does have an environmental commission, I think.
Yeah, I think it, I installed it with, it used to be the environmental commission, and they're reended for the resiliency commission, I believe, in council.
Yeah, if you look at their website, there is a resiliency, um, committee that was formed recently.
I would be hopeful that if we were to open up environmental commission to the county, that maybe in the meantime, while we're trying to assess a potential merger between B cost and the environmental commission, that opening up the seats to county residents might ease some of the quorum issues that they've been having. That would be my expectation, just in terms of ripple effect, that appointing county residents to the environmental commission would ease up some of the quorum requirements. But I also, twenty-six seats, wouldn't mind a merger, but they do accomplish different things, and so I think we would have to be very, very deliberate in the context of a merger to identify what a new commission's responsibilities for.
So the EC has twelve seats. So does that mean that B cost has fourteen seats?
That's a lot, and, um, to, and also, in talking about the fusion board, um, there is a vacancy, um, because that should have an appointment from the Monroe County Commissioners. I've contacted their office several times to see if there is anybody who has been appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and I still have heard no response.
Well, see, not, I would not be surprised to think on quorum issues that there's one seat that is not available.
So it's not their priority.
Um, the last one I had that we haven't talked about yet is the Farmers Market Advisory Council, which I think it kind of lends itself to having county members, since I would say more people who live outside city limits participate as vendors.
I would imagine as well.
Yeah.
Given the space it requires to have a farm. Oh, lovely view.
So I would, I guess, I would start by asking Arcs about that, since they oversee it.
And actually, I think the liaison and I have had a conversation about this before, um, related to this, and I think there's confusion, because again, this doesn't really, there's nothing in code that says. Because again, this doesn't really, there's nothing in code that says. You know. You have, well, besides the general provision. Um, but there's nothing specifically to their advisory council that says. Uh, anything that excludes county people, but I think their interpretation. Um, and from our conversation with the liaison is that. Farmers definitely live outside the city. So that would be a no brainer.
That one's interesting. There's customers, wooden marriage artists, and then vendors. Too specific.
What? Yeah, so vendors probably on there for being in the city lines.
That is one group there, custom.
There's also.
There's a possibility that people own property outside of city limits but live inside of city limits for their residency.
So, um. Should we reach out to? These six commissions? Well. Maybe not caps because we have, we're gonna have another conversation about caps later, um. To the commissions themselves, the other five, and ask them what they think about. Opening up. To uh, non-city residents who live in the county. And for transportation, we can, we can be specific and say, well. We want somebody from SCCSC. Lot of those people don't live in city limits. Because I do like Courtney's idea of asking that. I mean, not just the liaisons.
There's only six. We could individually go to those meetings and talk to the commissioners ourselves and just say like. Hey, not asking you for a formal vote or anything, but. In your opinion, since we're here in person, do you? Would you prefer this? Would you not prefer it? And we can kind of build consensus. About the commissioners and better understand their personal points of view. If everyone's willing to do that, I'm happy to take to them.
Sounds like a good idea. What are you saying, Courtney?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. That's a good idea.
I will, um. If it's, I guess I'll write with everyone, I can. Create a spreadsheet and share it um, with our council staff, just of. The commissions that we're looking at, what time, what day, days and times that they need so that we can look at. You know, our own schedules and to be them up accordingly. And I'll send it to staff to send out if that works.
Yeah, that's fine. Great, thank you. Thank you.
Cherokee Monstern?
Oh, yeah, I mean, have you talked to? Yes, come on up and give us the the skinny.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty current. It's just like, um. Administrations generally sort of hesitant to add town seats just because of. Added potential of administrative burden from keeping track of who's a county resident, who isn't. Um, and after my conversation with Christine with Jennifer. I talked about the four that were outlined by staff. I don't know about the. The disconnect between those six and the four. Uh, but there are a few like individual. Uh, sort of. What's the term I'm looking for? Other reasons behind, it's like um, being against county seats on these boards and commissions. Um. I guess I could just go through them, just so you guys could have a context of where the administration's kind of coming from. Uh, the BAC for one is, I, it's mostly because of the city dollars. Just city funding goes to city residents, sort of the logic there. Um. Just not seeing a benefit of county representation. Uh, and the Environmental Commission is essentially what the liaison sort of already said, they're already very big, hard to keep staffed. I think, I didn't specifically mention this, but I think that the administration is open to merging those as well. And then Tree Commission was mostly, I think, just. They were, they were already recommended to be disbanded by NOVAC. So sort of the NOVAC's report. Is that wrong?
Maybe they were talking about. I know that misunderstood some things. Maybe they were talking about merging it. They said it was all environmental stuff, so I don't remember.
Well, okay, I believe that's in there. Our conversation was a while ago, and I think I looked at it afterward, but I, I don't know, I can't remember that. Anyway, I'm not sure if that gives any additional context, but just sort of. The administrative burden is sort of a. A, a stated point of a general opposition, but. Something to keep in mind if we're adding these. That was all for me.
Hold on, I have to respond to that. I would not say that administrative burden is a. Worthwhile reason to not do something. Yeah, that's all I have. Like, that's not a compelling argument for me.
I think it's just the notion of changing things if not, you know, a, a, a major benefit. Is sort of where the administrative burden is a hurdle.
I think the benefit's clear. This is about representation.
Right. But I just in general of saying. For instance, the Art Commission, but there's a, the additional con of the city funds going to. City residents is sort of the intention behind that.
Okay.
That's all done.
The administrative burden, I wanted to check with Jennifer. Because. I mean, you're the one who does a lot of that administrative work and onboard and all that.
And that's my job. Um, so, uh, yeah, so. It's, it's no, nothing different that I'm not doing now, where, you know, we look at the application and see whether or not. You keep track of it by way of looking at the application. Um, and. You know, making sure that this person that is getting there um, would be. A, a, a county seat. Period. So like you, it, it wouldn't. That doesn't take long in, in that, oh, again. I know this is a new uh, position here, but I, I think that's, that's my state. Um, where I would be able to look at that and, and see. Who would be, so it's, it's not burdensome upon me because it's already what I'm doing. Um, it's what I predo for all of the interview committees when it comes to. Making sure before they start to think about interviewing somebody, if they even qualify first and foremost. Um, uh, you know, to be seated on that before we get to that process. So that's, you know, that's something that I'd think.
In, in that case. Are, who is the concern for the administrative or referring to then, if not Jennifer?
Um, I mean, it's sort of just in. General, I mean, it's sort of my position as well. And I have to consider, or I guess. If there were council seats, never mind, there would be Jennifer's seat. But it just sort of introduces, you know, inconsistencies as general and what it is, like having a. City resident base requirement is helpful.
It don't have that now. It's already not consistent.
I suppose that's true. It's just the general anxiety towards it, but.
Yes. I just, I had a question because I knew it's in clarification, you said it was your job as well. But I think uh, Jennifer's job was different because she's supposed to be seeing all of our boards and commissions, all the appointments and the entire process. Is that a duplicated job that you also have because of so that's? Maybe not what was intended?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I missed that.
Oh, okay, I, I was genuinely like, whoa, really? And if that's the case, then I, I want to shop this stuff. Yeah, okay. I got really, so I'm sorry.
I didn't make it. And one other aspect is, uh, I think the liaison mentioned it in Jennifer's survey. But um, a reduction to the environmental commission, I think they would also be in favor of producing those seats. And there are some others, commissions that have a lot of seats. I know that, um. If, if you're interested in hearing of it, CBBG has, I think, eighteen mayoral seats to fill. Which is kind of a lot. While you're looking at it, that's something to look at first. Yeah, more than I know. That's, yeah, that's kind of a lot as well.
Not to belabor the question, but um, wasn't there going to be an? Integration into the onboard and the application? Of like a my Bloomington sort of a thing?
Yeah, that's a conversation that IT, yes.
Yes and no.
Yes, it should because I know the deputy mayor made it very clear. Um, when we last spoke, I want to say early in the fall. Um, when it came down to making the changes in onboard, because the people haven't seen onboard is changing. But one of the biggest things, I think, as to why this conversation has opened up to begin with. With county seats is making sure that we eliminate the mistake. Before the mistake even happens by having that integration of my Bloomington. Be integrated in the application process.
And that will, you, you put in your address and it will tell you if you're in or out of city limits, so that administrative burden could be.
Exactly, that's eliminated, which we're now waiting on IT for their next. Round of um, onboard updates to ensure that that gets in so that, again, that eliminates. The, the burden. Um, with airboats, uh, with, you know, taking that away from.
Okay, so uh, let's go to public comment. Is there any public comment on? City residency requirement of boards and commissions?
Well, just very brief. Thank you, very briefly, uh. Brief. I think I would also share an administrative concern.
Do you want to come up?
Unless you can hear me, I don't need.
Courtney, can you hear?
No, I'm making, I'm happy where I am, really. Oh, it's okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to be short, I'm just trying to. Very briefly, hello everyone, it's good to see you. I, well, I understand administrative concerns, rightfully I say, uh, particularly Klosberg. In these days, given the what's faced by all local governments now and in the future, but that's real and all of the agenda to remain that. Forever. I think you're on to something here, and I think importantly, you're in the sort of frontier. I'm thinking now specifically what's on the table thus far in the meetings, by the way. I think you're on the frontiers of what make, will make local government more effective all the time. This is one element of it, but this collaborative look at membership of, of boards and commissions is one part of this. And I think the learning is very important. I, I would say the one that occurs to me only relating to this topic is, you know. As membership may adjust somewhat on the cross jurisdictional measures. You then suggest who's in the room. For these boards and commissions, or who should be in the boards and. Who should be in the room? That I would say briefly again, lastly, goes back to the. Limits, limitations and flaws of the original framing, the NOVAC report, uh, which did not talk beyond maybe how many they should be. Boards and commissions, what are they for? And relating their participation in citizenship. So I think you're, you're at the cusp of many things here, and I think as you think about the membership side. It goes back to what's already on your agenda as you think about whether it's this only part or roles and privileges of both or other tools. Or any such thing, thinking about. How is this done well on the ground in effect by the boards and commissions themselves? And if you're changing memberships, you add some questions in the equation of how to make it all work.
Any other?
This is a much more comfortable chair. Can I just back this away?
Any other public tone? Christopher. Mr. Angie.
Isabel, hi. Good after, uh, good afternoon. I just want to take a look at the administrative uh, aspect of this just a little bit. I think we want to make sure it's a privilege to be like a resident of the city. And going back to the NOVAC report, I just want to say that. We ha- have to have the, the lens of making boards and commissions much easier as far as filling positions and getting the feedback. So overall, we're sort of looking this kind of with a scalpel and not with a overview of how we're sort of looking at them. So a- allowing county residents in is esp- I think is great, especially if you can do that with the county government. And having the county fill in those positions, then it feels like a, a, a. Real community government, which I think should be the goal in a lot of these that kind of transcend boundaries, which. Um. Some of the, some of them make it uh, much easier to do that than others, like the status of women and children, et cetera. But if we're gonna do that for all these sort of different ones and adding the, the county component, it becomes, I think, a little bit. Difficult, but you know, just to take that in mind that we're. I'm hoping that the council processes moves a board and commission to something much more manageable and. Easier for both the council and the major office to get input, because if you're not getting input from these boards and commissions, what are we getting? We're just looking at, we're looking at a facade of uh, public engagement, not real public engagement. And ultimately, at the end of the day, I want in, public engagement with. Our elected officials in these boards and commissions. So I just want to pipe in on that. Uh, thank you for your work today. Great meeting. And I am having a little audio difficulty. It's a little bit muffled. It's, is it live or memorex? It sounds very like a phone booth. So anyway. I can hear a council member daily very well, by the way.
Thank you. I can hear you very well too, Mr. MG, thank you.
But in contrast, council member daily is very quiet. There we go, we bumped her up. Okay, um. So, uh, we have still a lot on the agenda. It's already one oh eight, um. I wonder if we can do item two B and then maybe skip some new business after that. Do the discussion of first reading and stuff. That okay? So, um. Moving the residency requirements to city code to a different section. Um, I posed, uh. Page twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I mean, it's very simple, uh, basically move almost everything in two point oh eight. Point oh two oh. To section two point one two point zero zero. And I didn't vet this with council staff, so I don't know if there's some legal reason that we can't do it, um. But really, everything except for section one. And section thirteen. Under this um, executive branch general provisions. Is about boards and commissions, not about the executive branch as such. So I'm eager to hear feedback on this proposed change. Um, I do want to reach out, of course, to the mayor's office. I don't want the mayor to think that we're taking things away from her, from her office. Um, but I wanted to run it by the committee first. Uh. Definitely number thirteen, we need to work on because that's. Includes um, budgetary information by all departments and divisions, preparing the budgets. But I am not familiar with in actual practice, boards and commissions preparing any budgets. Maybe I just don't know about it. That's something we can find too.
Yeah, the only border question that I could think of is the CIV, but that's not necessarily what we're talking about.
Any thoughts on this?
You, I guess functionally, like what is the effect that this is meant to have, or is it just shortening?
Oh, well, the, so the effect is that it moves it to the chapter. To the chapter that's entitled boards, commissions and councils, because it's all information that's relevant to boards, commissions and councils. Councils is kind of a weird thing, I don't, I mean, it's the common council. Do we, I think maybe we have one resident advisory body that's, so. I don't know, that's a weird thing, but I wasn't suggesting to change that, I just want to put those general visions. At the start of the section where most of our boards and commissions are described. That was the.
Fine with me.
Yeah, I, I've received this as just a general cleanup, I didn't have any objections to it, it seemed. Just cleaning up to me, I didn't think there was anything groundbreaking or alarming in here.
Okay, yeah.
And, um, Lisa, from a legal perspective, do you think this? I mean, I, I will reach out to the mayor's office before we, and, and I can, I can speak with the legal department as well. To see if there's any reaction of concern and response to this. I think it makes sense. To include this in the section on boards and commissions. It may make it more, um. Make, make the public more aware of these requirements to, unless, you know, to look in the executive branch, we wouldn't necessarily know. That all of these residence requirements exist.
Yeah, and it's not just residency, I mean, a selection of officers, forum, majority vote.
Yeah.
That you can seize.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess for the next step, I'll reach out to the deputy mayor and Lisa. Contact the legal department.
Correct.
Go from there. Okay, next, as I mentioned, I think I would like to postpone. Discussion of legislation first reading, because we have some new business that we wanted to get to. Is that, Courtney, is that okay with you? Okay. All right, so let's go, uh, I do want to do the first reading stuff, but we'll do it next month.
And it's, it's a priority for staff too, because it's an area that I think would benefit from, from delay. Greater clarity and having the ability to have some discussion, et cetera, first reading, I think would be beneficial for staff too.
Well, then let's segue to the updates from.
Sure. I view this as an opportunity really to start a conversation about, um. Greater efficiency, some steps that we can take on a staff level. That would enhance the productivity and efficiency. Largely, this is driven at this point by recent changes in state law and federal law that will be occurring going forward. The, the state law changes took effect fairly recently regarding live transmission of meetings, archived. Copies, uh, changes to notice requirements. You may or may not be aware of the specifics of that, but all those steps add to the two-page list of steps. That staff go through in, uh, supporting and organizing the public meetings. That there was a, a two-page document that just for your awareness, that was in a packet a couple of years ago for that purpose. Um, and of course, uh. Staff monitor compliance with, with all those various steps. That the new federal accessibility laws will take effect in April of twenty twenty six. We are allocating significant staff time to those issues now, as are other city departments. We spend, uh, some portion of time almost every day in, um, updating our website. Working on, on documents, communicating with other city departments such as ITS. ITS and the city have contracted with an accessibility consultant. Who will be and has been advising the city with respect to policies. Um, I'm told that there will be, uh, a recommendation from the city consultant, um, this month. With respect to, um, policies that the city, um, would consider going forward. So I don't have anything specific to report with respect to that, other than, um, council's office and the city are, are working. To, to meet that deadline. So all of this involves changes for staff, and ultimately, these will trickle down to, to council members as well as time progresses. I view this as an opportunity to, um, to reconsider and improve different aspects of. Of the office's operations. As I mentioned in my, uh, budget presentation to council. These, these new, uh, legal changes require more, more staff time in preparing and supporting meetings. So, uh, we are interested in finding ways to decrease staff time. On meeting support and preparation, so that we can increase time in our other tasks. Such as, uh, legislation, preparation and review. Rebacking title to, uh, title fifteen work, which is ongoing now as well. So as a group, we came up with some suggestions that you see in the document and the packet. One suggestion is to reconsider, uh, council's committees. You had mentioned, uh, cap, also number P. Matt Smith. It struggled to, to meet quorum requirements and, and, um, it, in the past has required. A significant amount of, of staff time. This would be potentially, uh, one committee, uh, to be reconsidered. Currently, there's a fiscal committee and a budget task force. Is there any opportunity to combine those two entities into one? Is, is that more efficient? Both for council members and, and for staff? Decreasing the duration of, of council meetings and as well as committing movements potentially. Uh, we've been researching and have researched the use of a consent agenda. To, uh, potentially, uh, make meetings more efficient. Using a consent agenda to adopt minutes, appointments to wards and commissions. Certain first readings, and there may be opportunities to use the consent agenda in other areas too. First readings, if there's discussion and the opportunity, uh, for council members to ask questions during first readings. Maybe that, uh, makes the second readings and, and the adoption process perhaps more, more efficient. Changes in the order of business going forward. Would, would there be an appetite for, uh, presenting council reports? Or hearing reports from other departments at, at the end of the meeting to, to save staff time? Um, not, I'm not thinking just of council staff, but, but city staff potentially, who maybe attend the meeting. And, and wait for, for their portion, uh, for second readings.
All right, how would that save staff time? Most of the reports given to us are also by staff.
You know, I, I'm thinking as much about the, the actual legislation, the, the second readings.
Okay.
And because I think, and, and the city consultants who maybe, um, like bond counsel. Reading, who maybe come at the beginning of the meeting. And then, you know, sometimes it takes an hour to get through the reports before. That really the, the legislation starts, so would there be any benefit in, in changing the order of that business?
As of the way the council is currently structured, I would say definitely not, just given the fact that we go until eleven. PM sometimes, and like, I don't think it's number one fair to ask staff to come back at that time. But also, we have in the code, it's written in that if one council member motions to adjourn, there's a second at midnight. Meeting automatically ends, I don't think that pushing the council report to the end of it would. Be structurally effective.
Okay, well, um.
You should finish your presentation, then I can talk about his points.
All right, and then, but please finish your presentation. Uh, the, the final suggestion right now is establishing deadlines for, for council number submissions. Of, of materials. You know, that potentially could lead to fewer packet agenda, which, which take on staff time. Currently, uh, the, uh, city departments have a deadline before the meeting, which has worked really well. For our office and reviewing and processing materials. It would be helpful to have a similar, um. Deadline or attempt to, to meet a deadline, uh, for council members. A- a- again, um, you know, I think accessibility will ultimately play a role. Once we receive recommendations, um, I, I think those recommendations will include, for example. Suggested deadlines on when materials are submitted to, to council. I mean, one deadline that was thrown out was two weeks in advance of a meeting. So I, but again, we don't have any, any recommendation from the city's consultant or ITS. At, at this time, so, um, there is no need for action on this point. But I think it, it would help us streamline the meeting process. If there were certain points, um, when council members put submit materials to staff. Prior to, to the meeting, so that they can align with our normal packet agenda now. And then I, I wanted to, to highlight also that, um, beginning in December. Or period, um, we will go down to two full-time staff members probably through. Maybe February, March of next year, so we'll, um. We're hoping to start Jack Hopkins early, earlier this year, maybe even in January. And get that underway before accessibility really kicks in. So our staff will be juggling, um. Workflow at the beginning of the year, and that also is kind of driving some of these recommendations to a desire to, to make, um. The, the office more productive and efficient and like that.
Okay, well, thank you for that report, um. So I'll open it up to committee members, um. What are your, we have. Sydney already gave some feedback on the, um. Change of the order of business reports and end of meeting, and I agree with what Sydney said, so. Um, what are the other, um, reactions to the recommendations here?
I love a consent agenda. Love it.
Yeah, we've been, we have talked about that before, um. What one takes to agree with that?
Oh, the county uses it, and it works very well.
Yeah, you know, I'd like to, um, consider using it and, um. In a broader context, um, even than the county potentially. But, you know, to, um, to council members who likes point. Yeah, I'd like to get to. To a day where we're not having meetings until eleven o'clock, you know, and my hope would be that maybe if we implement. Or start testing some of these changes, there wouldn't be reports starting, even if they were at the end of the meeting, you know, at ten o'clock at night. So some communities use consent agendas for reports as well. I don't know if that's something that interests council members or not, but maybe there are instances where. Reports to council could go into a consent agenda. In terms of implementing it, um, it would require, um, an amendment to, to title two. Council would need to adopt that, and the struggle that I see in the office is. These, these new laws are requiring so much staff time in terms of meeting requirements that. You know, it's a challenge to find time to work on title two, for example. To work on title fifteen or some of the other changes we talked about today. Really, um, the Bloomington municipal code needs attention.
Are there other legal concerns, like when you say that, um, you know, staff is, has a full plate already and is going to be down staff member for a period? I mean. You know, I can write an ordinance, I mean, it's a. I would just, like, if we move ahead with consent agenda or, you know, uh, discussion at first reading. I'm just wondering how much work that necessarily has to be for council staff. Because it could be, when a must draft something, committee approves it, it goes forward. Or do you have legal concerns? Right now, we're talking about consent agenda, I mean, are there legal concerns if we just change our code and say there's a consent agenda?
I mean, it, wouldn't, I mean, I'm, I would be happy to do the extra research to see how other cities have done it in their local.
And, and we've, we've done that, I think, I think the next step would be presenting some options. To, to the committee for, for your consideration, because there are like different. You know, you can do this a little bit, or you can like open the door and, and broadly write the code so that. Several different things are permitted on the consent agenda. And just because that appears in the code, it doesn't mean that the consent agenda has to be used in every instance. Generally, um, the, the provisions, um, can enable one, one council member, for example, to say. Oh, I, I really think we need discussion on that in first reading, I'd like to pull it out of the consent agenda.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to take that off y'all's plate, if you send me all the notes, I'm happy to come up with a couple of different options and present it. Probably not at the December meeting, but maybe at the.
Right.
The next one of the new year. Yeah.
You know, and what you have. If, if you're willing, um, and interested in this, it might be beneficial to sit down and like walk through. Some of the, the research to gather.
True.
Um, because we've accumulated, you know, a significant amount. So, uh, there are different decisions that you can make as to what seems, um, sensible under the circumstances.
Okay, I will send you an email to set up the time to do that.
Great, thank you, Sydney. Um, so back to the, uh. You have an eye on time. We consider service council committees. I do thank the fiscal committee and the budget task force, like I was on the fiscal committee. I know Sydney was on the budget task force, but almost every meeting we were like, wait, is that something the budget task force does, or is that something we're supposed to do? So I would be in favor of merging those, I'm, I'm not even sure if the budget task force was maybe just intended as a one-year. I mean, they're both not in code, so.
Yeah, I didn't get to go to very many meetings, just by the nature of how quickly they were meeting, I just. But I would agree, I do think that as long as there's a representative from the mayor's office and the clerk's office, that. Yeah, it would be fine to merge them.
Yeah, for the fiscal committee, the membership is just council members, but our controller has been attending all the meetings. Which I much appreciate him. Which I much appreciate and I expect she would continue to do so.
The deputy mayor has attended itself, yeah. It might be if we wanted to keep the goals of them separate. I know that one of them was focusing on like process and the other one. Like the process of the budget compared to what I thought the council committee was doing was identifying budget priorities. That may not be what happened. But it it might be, um if if we were to merge, it might be helpful to identify. Hey, this meeting is for process and this meeting is for priorities. So that, you know, it's the same people working on the same thing and everyone has the same access to information. But one time you're focusing on, hey, this is the process that we're working on versus these are our budget priorities.
Um we will be starting on budget priorities of the December council deliberation session. Courtney, what are your thoughts given those staff recommendations?
Um I mean, it was eye-opening and and I hear a lot of a lot of what was said. I think one concern that I have, I mean, I understand the the concern about the the timeline, especially with like addendums and stuff being thrown in constantly. At the last minute, I know that's a lot of work. I don't see how that cannot be happening though, given the timeline of when we get our packets. So I don't know if we then want to visit revisit the idea of maybe when we're getting the packet information? Because most council members are not reading their packets until, you know, Sunday night, you know, coming out on a Friday. We're not gonna sit down on a Friday night or a Saturday night, most likely, and look at them. So probably Sunday evenings, Mondays are when most are looking at them. And then time to reach out to the uh uh interested parties, right? So then an addendum is is or an adjustment, right, uh amendment, the word I'm looking for, is uh. Naturally gonna happen very last minute, so then I think if we want to readjust those timelines, we need to look at the bigger timeline overall. I'd be interested in doing that, um but just to point that out, that I think that kind of goes along with that then.
Good one.
And is that mostly on um resolutions that you're concerned? Like we get the resolution on a Friday and then we don't have time to read it till Sunday night or Monday? And then it's on the Wednesday schedule? Because for ordinances, we should be looking at them first reading.
Exactly, there's a first reading and then you have time for the second reading, sorry.
Yeah.
Um I. I think one of the things that takes up a lot of time at meetings is. There are maybe questions asked that could have been answered prior to the presentation. And so I think it would be helpful if we came up with a way. And expectation for council members that is like, hey, you should be only asking questions on this. That sparked during the presentation, where you were presented with a piece of information that was not in the reading. Other questions should be asked prior. I I think that would take, that would save a lot of time if we could do something similar to the budget process. Where we're submitting questions for the person, I recognize that takes up a lot of time administratively during the day perhaps. Um but we could also just be, the expectation could be, hey, email the person at the bottom for the contact, ask your questions. Because that really is what takes up a an exorbitant amount of time, not to mention there are. Multiple examples I can think of where questions have been asked where the person presenting could not give an answer. Because it either required a lot of numbers or just they didn't have access to the information. So giving an opportunity to ask questions in advance, I think would reduce meeting time. And also give the presenters more of a clear expectation on what. Questions are going to be asked and be able to better prepare for the line of questioning the councils will go down. But my is, oh, sorry, sorry.
I just want to say that um. Some, those are not public. So if the like, if I ask the questions, and I do often ask questions beforehand, because I want the presenter to be ready to answer them. At the meeting or or so, they often answer them beforehand, but then. And I ask them even if I've already gotten the answer, because I want the public to understand why I'm gonna vote a certain way. If they don't have that information, that they don't understand the issue. So if we could, if there's some way we could make those Q and A's, those email exchanges public. Then that would help, and I do see, we we have about ten minutes left of this meeting, nine minutes, yes. Quick call.
To maybe kind of build on both of those issues. Have you considered including the questions the council members have in the responses in the packet that's released? Similar to what you do with the budget hearings, where you actually accumulate all the questions asked related to legislation and the answers. And put them out, post them online, you do something similar during the budget hearing. And since you've got the first reading, that would be the ideal time to like throw out a whole bunch of questions, get them answered. And publish those in the packet. That would satisfy the concern about getting questions asked early and also satisfy your concern about making sure the public is aware of what questions we have. And then you guys also have other mechanisms for informing the public about why you vote somewhere, and it doesn't have to be during the meeting, it could be afterward. Um some of you have Substacks, some of you have social media, so you could use all the tools at your disposal rather than just relying on that one. And something else to consider.
Yeah, thank you. Um I think we should go to public comment next. I I'm sorry that it looks like we're not going to get to the code of conduct. Deputy clerk Crossley, I'm sorry.
It's done, so I'm good.
Yeah. So um let's go to open public comments. Um any member want to comment on general concerns with this committee, I see a hand raised on suit.
This is Cross's question, so second public comment and third and final.
So final one.
Fine.
We're almost at our time.
Yeah, so I would.
Good, good, good afternoon, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
So um in regards to using all tools at your disposal, um in regards to um, you know, transparency, uh timely transparency. I would recommend that not only do you include all materials in the packet. But also you explore the option of using like a Google Doc. Or something that's available in viewer mode, read-only mode to the public. And that all council members could interact with so that in advance of the meeting. There would be an understanding of what discussion had occurred before the meeting uh in a transparent and um in an open fashion. So that that would also be helpful. Um I think explaining your votes afterwards. Um there might be a time and a place for doing that, but I think it's going to be helpful for the public to understand and come to the table with. The same information that, at least to the extent it's possible, that the council members do. So that that would be my suggestion is to explore the use of, since you already have a Google enterprise account. You could use a Google Doc or something and then. Provide that to the public in advance, thank you.
Thank you, any other uh public comment? Yes.
Three very quick things, although again, first, let me expand, this is off sideways a little bit. Now I'll expand what I may understand, but it's your concern with council processes is tremendous. This has to do with the movement of the council offices, and I offered this just as a one citizen feedback. And as a citizen also was involved, remember the city of Bell in California when there was that big horrible thing, a lot of corrupt officials? Not the example here, not to argue about that part of it, but there was all these people went to jail for stealing a lot of public money. But I worked for the League California Cities and one of these did it after the fact, went down to facilities and public meetings. And one of these the public said was how the city hall had been so closed up, there were curtains over the windows, you can't get, you couldn't see it. I was sadly reminded of that when I came looking for the council the other day. And I was out in my western vacation for a month, but I've been up on everything, so I used to, I you know, to the proper chairman, we'll give council. I know you're downstairs, and I got the information I got from the person at the desk, and I'm paraphrasing horribly, was in effect. They're down, he couldn't explain exactly where this was, but it was kind of down that way. And because council members don't commit much anyway, or something like that, so the messaging was horrible, that was not true. But the messaging from just a member, the random member of the public, then I went looking for it, I didn't even see where it was. I walked all over and back looking for the damn scat darn thing, excuse me. And so, and it made me different that, this was a couple of weeks ago. So I'm gonna say, but this is a real story, I'm not making stuff up, I mean, and I wouldn't raise it, because I'm deeply concerned personally about your work. I'm just saying, I like the council and I like the council to be seen for its importance. And it felt hidden and and diminished. I'm not saying it's real, that's all, that's all that, it's just it's information, I'm not, you know, don't take it for granted, one person, immediate feedback. Second, boards and commissions related and back to the NOVAC and back to the work for the report itself. And back to everything underway to carry out yada yada from the NOVAC and forward. I've been interested, now you can answer this now, I've never quite understood the impact of the work, some of the steps have been made. The reason, some of the relationships with council members from circular committees, particular committees that thing, that's done. I don't know what the impacts have been, really, and you may know this, I'm just saying, I'd love to know. Not that I probably couldn't talk somebody about now, but it it's interesting, okay, with some of what's been done, what has it meant? What did you learn? What has the council learned? How is the input perhaps in some way, shape or form by the committees, commissions and boards to council processes been impacted or should be impacted? And that touches on just about my, almost my private thing, relates to the, what made me think about the the the, I'm gonna call it. Uh Roberts versus Rosenberg's rule order question. How, and I I do sit on one of these boards of commissions by the way, that's not relevant directly, but.
We only have a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to think, so I'm just saying, I'm curious about the skills, preparation for liaisons and chairs. About press proceeds and ways to involve run meetings and such. I will just say it's not. Lastly, I swear, um Monroe, I mentioned this as an informational piece for you. Monroe County Health Equity Council. Uh which I'm not gonna talk about now, you may or may not know what it is, and I put that right now on it, it's interesting. And um there's a small grant from the Community Engage Alliance, which is gonna support some of the work that's gonna happen through a. O'Neil School capstone in service to the McCaffrey as a client. And I happen to write, I mentioned this, and I then actually called eating the capstone, and I wrote the proposal to CEA, so I'm connected to it. And we'll be coming during that capstone in the spring with students, we'll be wanting to speak with some council members probably. As well as how we, we already have good letters of support for the proposal payment for the board of health. From uh United Way Health and Community. So I'm done, I'm done, that's all, you have every right to do that, I agree.
Thank you. Um so, no other hands raised on Zoom? Um scheduling the next meeting, I think it was probably, oh, Courtney?
We do.
Oh. Well, we uh really running out of time.
I mean, he can.
I'll be, I'll be quick, it's about, I'll second Lisa's, I I think the consent agenda is great. And if we can get very administrative U D O changes that are typos, not having Jackie Scanlon present. I think would streamline the council, make them shorter meetings, I know the county council has a consent agenda, not that their meetings are shorter. But anyway, I think that'd be a step in the right direction, thank you for your time.
Okay, um so uh in order to try to avoid a meeting during the day for December, did we already have one on the books, probably?
I think we do, yeah.
I think I will um send out a a scheduling call. To clerk and court's office and committee members and council staff. So we can try to get that to be after five PM, because it it does seem that's that's become very difficult. So that's it, thank you.